Nice thing is that works literally across the street.
Yes.
Oh, nice.
And then.
I'll get my daughter.
Oh, that's exciting.
Well, she's been down in college. She told her she had a little bit of an hour in the last two months of the address.
And just the adjustments in agenda fifteen dot one and fifteen dot two is not going to happen this evening. So you can cross that one out. And entertain a motion to approve the January thirteenth twenty twenty-two regular school board meeting minutes. By Phoebe second. Lynn, any errors, submissions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
No?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes. So move. And entertain a motion to rescind Maria Ryer's retirement notification for the end of this school year. I'm gonna go with Elaine for the first and Doug for the second. And.
Yeah, we were really excited about this. Her retirement plans changed. And because it had already gone through the process, we have to go back and rescind that. If I wasn't happy with that, I wouldn't have brought her name back to the board, but I'm extremely happy with that. She's been an excellent teacher for years and we're lucky to have her for as long as we can keep her, so.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Whoops, oh, we got one, Andrew.
Am I miss part of the discussion, but does she come back in where she left off as far as seniority and benefits or anything, or does she have to settle over?
It's gonna be retiring at the end of the school year, so she hasn't actually left yet, but we've prepared that we'd have to hire somebody else next year, but now we don't have to do that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Grab that paper.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Lena?
Yeah.
Lynn?
Yeah.
Hunter?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
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 Yes. Seeing there's no public comment tonight, we'll move to board comments. Any board members have anything? Pat?
So I followed up with Scott Albert after our last board meeting, you know, with the lot of the public comments and continuing public comments that I received after the meeting. And, you know, I just simply asked Scott, what does it look like if our school board reconsider's a vote that we had on universal masking earlier in the year? And he sent a question off to the lawyers and they came back with the answer. And the answer is really plain and clear and simple, and it's very summed up with a policy of requiring consistent, correct usage of well-fitting masks in indoor spaces for all students, faculty, staff, and visitors, and across all school-based, school-sponsored activities. Universal masking policy allows for a removal of mask while eating and drinking in designated spaces, but not for indoor mask breaks. School units that do not enforce a universal masking policy must continue to contact trace and quarantine staff and students in accordance with the SOP. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we had it out here in plain English that first off, as a board, we're not able to reconsider that motion unless an individual who voted to enact the universal masking makes the reconsideration motion. So that's likely not going to happen here at this case, at this juncture where we are. We need to keep the schools open. And at this point, no matter what anybody feels, the SOP is designed to keep the kids in school as long as possible. I, for one, would like to see the kids' faces before the school year is out. But I also don't want to be jumping the gun while we still have a situation going on here in the community. And in addition to that, a decision that our district would have to make in regards to the to universal masking or not, also has an effect on the MOU with the staff members that work here in this school district for, you know, educating our children. And I just, I know that it's a big hot topic, but at this point, it's, it's a situation that much more suited for, you know, the state's legislation level, those types of people to make the decisions, you know, not here at the board. And I understand, again, it is a hot topic issue. And I hear about it all the time, and a lot of people hear about it all the time, good, bad, or indifferent, right? But, you know, I just want us to collectively as a board, kind of bring the focus back here into the district, despite whether we're universal masking or not. The teachers, Scott, everyone here, all the staff, everyone has the best interests of the children in mind. We all should be focusing on making sure that we're not increasing the gap in the education that we have developed over this period of time. And even though masks are uncomfortable, maybe not fun, educating kids is, so I, like I said, I want to see these masks off just like anybody else, but I think that this board here has the children's education interests in mind at this point, and that's where I'd like to keep my focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board? Phoebe, then Joel?
So my comments are mostly pointing out a lot of the positives that have been happening in our school district. And I wanted to give a quick shout out to Mr. Labonte for helping put together the musical and going through the audition and then the rehearsals. It's looking already fantastic. I couldn't be more thrilled for our students to have that kind of opportunity, especially in today's climate. I also want to give a huge shout out to our bus drivers. They don't get the appreciation that they often deserve. And with the weather changing and with that big storm coming up, I know it's on Saturday, but I, I do want to tip my hat to them. And I, I would honestly like to give them a round of applause if possible. Right, thank you.
Yeah, DJ was in here earlier, but I guess he isn't here. I just wanted to follow up during his report, the last meeting he talked about. And as many people know, I do a lot with robotics all around the state and whatnot. And he mentioned that through the Foster Tech connection, that the Blue Crew Robotics team up at Mount Blue was gonna be bringing in some of the students from Spurston High School, and I've been working with Rob Taylor and group on that. And I just went up there, a group of four of them have signed up, a fifth is interested. Three of them have gone up there tonight to get integrated into that team up there, so that's coming along and got some competitions coming up in February, March, and April, I guess, to be exciting for. So I just, that's a good thing. There was, it's disappointing, we didn't have a team here, but that's linked in there, and it gives them the opportunity to get into some of that stuff because that program, you know, is very valuable for students, so just wanted to follow up on that.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you, Joel. I'm glad we are joining the Blue Crew. I've known kids from Mount Blue that are part of that program, and they're as enthusiastic and strong about it as the kids in this district have been. I'm glad to see them joining up.
Anyone else? Okay, we did have a late arrival, but I'm gonna allow the Daniel Seymour, Sharon? That's okay. Just state, state your name, residence, please. Turn the mic on.
Test, test. Ooh. Back up a little bit. Yeah, my name is Daniel Seymour. Like the start, Patrick, I walked and I couldn't help what you say. You know, you want to teach children, that's the most important thing. But have you, have we taken the time to teach ourselves about anything that's going on right now? Has anybody about COVID, about wearing a mask? Show hands. You guys have all educated yourself on what's going on? Do you know what this mask is for right here? Patrick, what I'm wearing? This is a surgical mask, right? So when I'm leaning down performing a surgery, if I were to be a surgeon, which I'm not, I have no medical degree. This is to keep particles from my mouth and going into an open cavity in a human, right? COVID's airborne. It's an airborne thing. This doesn't stop airborne, airborne particles from floating around the air. This isn't the flu. The flu has bigger droplets. Anybody ever painted a house with a, none of you guys want to hear this. I know you don't. No, you're all gonna fall asleep on me. Anybody ever spray painted a house with a respirator mask on? Ever? Nobody ever done that here? You take the respirator mask off, you get particles all over your mouth still from that paint. Those paint particles are fifteen hundred times bigger than a COVID nineteen particle coming out of my mouth with this mask on that does absolutely nothing. You understand? And my eight-year-old daughter wears this thing at daycare and at school all damn day long, and she can't see her teacher read to her from the front of the classroom. And you said this isn't your, you guys' responsibility anymore to deal with, to hear about? I completely disagree because we need to push back at some point, and it's never gonna happen from the state level down. It's never, it's never gonna happen. It's political at that point. We're, it's not political here. It's not supposed to be. It's not. It is up there. There's twenty-four states in this country that have not mandated vaccines in schools. Five of which made it illegal for schools to decide whether to mandate it. Five of those twenty-four. Why can't we be the twenty-fifth? Why? Why instead of following, doing what other schools do, let's do what other states do, and let's have schools follow us? Let's make the right decision for our kids. You want to teach and kids is fun and all this and that? Let's not screw these kids up for their entire lives. That's what we're doing. My daughter asked me when we leave school, why, why does she have to wear a mask when we go places? I said, why would you do that, baby? This doesn't stop COVID. They make you wear these all day long? Why? I teach her how to think for herself and critically think because they have no idea, these kids. She's eight years old. She has no clue what's going on. No clue. She just wears this thing all day long. She doesn't, she doesn't mind it. You ever seen the inside of their mask when they get home from school? Disgusting. Me, parents are washing those things on a daily basis. They're changing them out on a daily basis, or every, or twice a day even. How many? It's disgusting. These kids got no idea what they're doing to their own lungs. And I'm sorry, that's just something that came up when I walked in. I did actually prepare something because I want to organize my thoughts, Scott. I hope you don't mind. Do you give me like three minutes? If you guys don't mind, please. And I sat down, I had a long drive. I thought about my, my thoughts, and I just wanted to honestly give you my, my honest opinion. And a little introduction of myself. I'm a veteran, I'm a journeyman lineman. I build power lines. I'm an entrepreneur. I'm a small business owner, and I'm also a father, most importantly. I've been on the road due to my career for years, and I've been constantly worried about my daughter. She's been here in Jay Maine. I'm on the road, you know, pursuing my career, trying to do both. I don't think anybody should hold that against me. I would hope you wouldn't. School is the one thing I never worried about until now. I've been to, I've been to her schools. I've always loved all of her schools. The music, the music classrooms are great, you know? We play guitar together, my daughter and I, and guitars and pianos and drums and all that. I didn't have that growing up. I had a kazoo. You guys know what a kazoo is? I really like a kazoo. It's terrible. Anyway. Now I am worried about her in school. When we began allowing our children to suffer the consequences of a virus that they themselves largely do not suffer from, and I put the word largely in there because I didn't want to say they don't suffer from it because somebody's gonna raise their hand and say children die from this. Okay, I'm sure a couple have. I'm not saying that they don't at all, but let's say largely, because ninety-nine point nine percent of children are not affected by COVID nineteen. And there's stats out there to look it up, which is why I ask, is anybody in here actually educated themselves on what's going on? Because if any of you have COVID, this isn't doing a damn thing. An M ninety-five isn't doing anything against COVID. It doesn't. If you have the flu, it keeps your particles down. It's droplet, yes. COVID nineteen, the particles are so small, they're airborne, they're floating around. That's not science. It's not. We began allowing our, our children to suffer the consequences of a virus that they themselves largely do not suffer from. I just wanted to say it again. They no longer seem to be the priority to the very people we put in positions to make them the biggest priority. And I'm kind of looking at you guys. I hope you don't take offense to that, but you guys are the ones that are supposed to make them the biggest priority. Do we remember being told fourteen days to flatten the curve? Look how far we've come because I went months without seeing my daughter due to crossing state lines for crossing, I was crossing state lines because I was an essential worker. That's my job. I was considered an essential worker. I had a piece of paper and I wasn't, I, my daughter's mother didn't let me see her for, I think, almost four months. Because of daycare, she would have been kicked out of daycare. She probably would have been, I don't know. You know, I was paying her tutors to have her tutor to add daycare, two tutors. One of the women went to Oxford and had her masters from there. And I was so thankful for them, and I did not want to get her kicked out of that situation. And here we are almost two years later, still complying with mandates such as wearing masks, social distancing, quarantining, forced vaccines, beginning to vaccinate children, and proof of vax to enter certain places, and demonizing those who don't comply. Can anybody agree? We've been demonizing those who do not comply? Just by wearing this thing that doesn't even do anything, actual science, this doesn't do anything, they're demonized. Rather than being considered actually educated, free-thinking people. Sorry, I lost my spot. Still, we find ourselves in a constant surge of cases, always a surge. I get a phone call weekly from your district stating the number of positive cases, a constant reminder to live in fear of what's happening. Numbers are going up all the time. Is anybody else tired of hearing that? Seems like the numbers are always going up. You might notice that? They're never, they're always going up twenty or thirty percent. They're never going down. Doesn't seem like they're ever going down. In a state that ranks forty-fourth economically in the country, Maine, more specifically, my most recent findings were from two thousand nineteen where neighborhoodscout.com ranked Jay School District thirty-second percentile in the state for reading and twenty-second percentile in the state for math, and that's in my daughter's grade. That's why I looked those numbers up. I can't imagine those numbers being any higher after two years of education, directly affected by ill-advised COVID nineteen mandates. Meanwhile, we want to talk about how children, on the most important thing, suicide rates are increasing rapidly. Since COVID struck, suicide attempts have risen fifty percent in girls from age twelve to seventeen, and I have an eight-year-old. So I think you would understand where I'm coming from and my reason for concern. We clearly are not prioritizing our children's development, their education, and especially not their health. I've been told we do what other schools do, but why not consider doing what other states do? Twenty-four states do not require masking in schools, five of which ban schools from mandating it altogether. If not, I fear we're sabotaging an entire generation who are soon to be in your position, and we will look towards for direction with reason. We're gonna look to them one day with reason. When we're all old, those are the kids, those are the humans, the adults, we're gonna need to make decisions for us at some point. But how can we expect them to do so when we're not even teaching them to think for themselves? We as adults aren't thinking for ourselves. I quote Benjamin Franklin, "It is the first responsibility of every citizen to question authority." That was from Benjamin Franklin. That's, I mean, that's been the foundation of this country forever, and we seem to forget that. That was also echoed throughout Vietnam when people were questioning the war in Vietnam. Some of you might remember those, that era as well. It's, it's been, it's gone on throughout history. Well, here I am questioning all of you, who should likewise be questioning your chain of command, something we, the people, are obligated to do. If for no one else, let's at least do it for our children and for their future. Let them live and let them learn and stop masking our children, and I appreciate your time. I really do, in listening to what I had to say. I've talked to Scott many times on the phone, and I'm glad I was able to make it here tonight, speak to you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
First, I want to welcome Laura Jackman tonight to our district. She came in ready to go. We've already had one early morning meteorologist testing session together this week. I also wanted to thank Ken Vining and Sean Keen for stepping up and covering the transportation director's position last week. I also want to thank Crystal Flag and Laura White for all their work on the budget and the budget books that you'll be receiving at the end of this meeting tonight. I've spent a great deal of time with the budget these past two weeks. I also did two special education teacher observations during this time. I met with Ken Vining, Ryan Schink, Wayne Neal, and the people from Siemens to discuss the finishing up of phase two. I met with association president Nathan Harmon. I've also had meetings with our district council over the last couple of weeks, and I was also involved in a Foster Tech CTE meeting this past week.
Any questions or comments for Scott? Okay. Administrator reports. Being as out, Chris.
Okay, so I figured most of my discussion tonight would be probably answering questions that you may have on the, the data, the testing data that I sent out to all of you. Didn't really want to go through it all. It would take quite a while to go through it all, but. It's Lynn. Oh, sorry.
First of all, thank you. This cover on this video, this mic that you mentioned. Yeah, we've been over the past few years and all of this. So I found that way the couple put hard and easy on the YouTube. The test results. I would, have you test yourself here, do you know? Is that from India?
Yes, yes.
So if you know anything else we can do? What are the teachers saying? What did, what did they see from working with the kids in the classroom and now having, having a lot of things to do? Is there something that they need that we should be attentive to? And what, what did the kids need?
I mean, I think they're doing as much as they can, and they're, I think they're doing what they're seeing from, from the testing. The NWEs, one piece, are also doing, you know, daily, weekly testing along the way as well. So, so it's just making sure they have that information to be able to use and then really focusing in on what they're seeing for the gaps. There's no questions that the, that COVID and students not being in school last year has, has increased gaps, and so it's really focusing on that, and it's, and it's really giving them permission. I mean, the tough thing is teachers, they're very dedicated, and they want to still do everything. And it's really us giving them permission to, which we have, but it's still hard for them to, to listen to that and say, okay, I have permission to really focus on what the kids need because what? And we've done this in all the grades. We've told the teachers, okay, what do students really need to have, have in place so when they come to you next year, you'll be able to move them forward even more? And it's really giving them permission to focus on just those areas this year and try to make it so, so next year the teacher can pick them up and even go further to be able to close those gaps. Yeah, and, and that's probably part of their major stress is, okay, how do I let go of some of the things I'm, you know, because in education, we've always educated above and beyond as much as we can, and now it's really trying to, to close those gaps now so they're ready for the next grade, and then the next grade takes them and moves them on even more, so. So it's really lowering that stress level on the teachers. And obviously, more time would be wonderful, but we know that's.
We, I think the law, we even, we're talking about looking at the retention policy. We are getting closer to time of year, they're just opening.
Yeah.
We would suggest to see some of the gaps, we want to, when we increase the retention.
Our hope is no, that we're, that we're seeing those gaps and trying to close them as, as much as we can to get to the level where they don't need to. I mean, we're also, you know, still offer a summer school this year to hopefully help that as well, so.
Elaine?
Thank you. Chris, excellent job. Really makes it clear. If anybody, any board members are, you know, confused about the numbers of what they, what this really means and looking, I'm sure you'll be glad to answer that. We have to remember, kids were out completely. We did the best we could with remote. But like every year, when a teacher walks in the classroom, we look at where they are. And we're doing the best, and I hope our teachers fully understand, as Lynn said, that we are behind them a hundred percent, whatever they need. If we need to start looking at some smaller class, I mean, we gotta, you know, look outside the box. If we need some smaller numbers, if we need to have some more RTI people, whatever we need. We're open to that, and this is the time of year we need to address that, so I really appreciate what they're doing. I know my own, one of my seven that are in school between grades one and ten was so thrilled she called me last week. I get my, my NWEA scores back, and my teacher had set my goal to be this number for reading at the end of the year, and guess what? I'm already there. And that's just being here every day, being in school, making that contact every single day, be able, being able to have that instruction time. Anything we can do to make that better? We're not upping production like we're producing a product. We're dealing with kids. So I just really appreciate everything, and these are gonna just get better. And whatever you need, please, tell us.
I agree, and I, and I also thought it was important, and I do want to mention this, to, to put in those NAEP scores, which are the national assessments, which are done every other year. They do them randomly by district. It's, it's very interesting that, that RSU seventy-three has been chosen randomly for the last twelve years. So so our students are actually part of that, and I think it is important to point out that, that Maine and New England in general has a much higher standard for education, and so in Maine, even though sometimes we look like we might be struggling a little bit in Maine, for our peers, when you look at us nationally, we're above, we're above the national average.
John, do I see your hand?
Yeah. Yeah, when, when we're talking about this, this test here, how, is it the same test each year? Essentially, like how standard is the test?
This, this specific test in the NWEA is the same test every year, and we give it, we give it at a minimum in the fall and the spring and look at the growth, and that's growth both, both by student and nationally. Among other kids nationally to see where we rank. And we also, and a lot of the schools this year are giving it in the winter too as well. But it is, it's one of the tests we use that, that is given every year.
It's given every year, but I'm saying, is the test, is this roughly the same test every year? There's a reason I'm asking this, just for my own purposes, trying to understand it, is by my own math, I mean, just last year, the amount of time they missed every Friday, which is, you know, I mean, like fifth of the school year, plus the time we started late, plus all just last year, the amount of time they missed every Friday, which is, you know, I mean, like fifth of the school year, plus the time we started late, plus all, you know, I mean, it adds up to almost a third of the year. And I, as it as as terrible as these are, I I would have expected them to be even worse, missing that much time. And I'm just kind of feeling around to see whether the test itself is is aimed lower at that point to make up the difference that they know that they know is there. It's not like the SAT where it's completely out of your completely out of your, not not that you're, they're doing it, I'm saying, but the the test itself is aimed differently.
No, the test, the NW itself has stayed the same, no matter, they have not taken COVID into consideration as far as their the standards and and the scale. Besides, the only thing the NWA has done differently has put in a remote, a way to do the test remotely instead of in person. But but these, the NWA has stayed as far as the the norms nationally have have not changed.
Because the, like I said, if you're missing roughly a third, that was a third of the in information that was never taught, it can't possibly have been taught. And that's even the rest of the time, even the time they did go, some of it was remote, they were only there two, they were only in school for half of that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I, I just think it's important, I understand that, listen, no one, I'm second to no one in my admiration for the work that the teachers are doing. But what I do think is important is that we actually quantify the problem itself. I I understand, you know, like everyone says that it's behind and we're making it up, but I I think it's, I think there should be a way to tell, is it where we are? And obviously, this doesn't do it, you know, and I'm.
Well, I would I would disagree that, I think this test does in a large part do that because it it does, this is overall scores you're seeing here, but the test itself, the teachers are actually able to go in and look at the scores. And it quantifies where the students are missing. It may be, you know, in certain skills that they're missing, and it'll actually show the teachers what skills the students are lacking in, and that's when the teachers start to hone in on those skills specifically to try to help get the kids back up. So and and we have other tests that teachers do as well during the year that do the exact same thing, that really show them specifically whether a kid is struggling with phonemic awareness or whether they're struggling with reading comprehension and things like that. And then it helps the teachers to set their lessons to help those students.
Yeah, I mean, that's good because, you know, like when it says here that that we should be making a 4.1 and we made a three, that that I don't, I'm glad that that information exists because this this I don't, I'm saying this itself isn't helpful, that three of what, four of what, I mean, I.
Yeah, yeah, and it is, it is, it's trying to show you the overall picture, but when they look at their their students in their class and they look at the kids individually, it's much more specific on, okay, why didn't, why did the student make the growth or why didn't they? And what skills were they not getting? So, yeah, this is more of a a high level look than than that, that that would be quite a lot of pages for you to look through us.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that, yeah. Excellent, thank you.
Yep. Elaine, and then Pat.
I just wanted to back up what you were saying. For many years, we we had to deal with the main education assessment, which was a test and had limits that changed every single year. It was like, we're preparing the kids for this, and then the next year, all the goals change. All the 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 hurdles were totally different every year, so it was never what I considered to be accurate testing as a person who was in the classroom giving with watching the kids take tests, and I couldn't take anything out of it as a teaching tool. The NUEA self adjusts to each kid as they take the test. So if you start out with this question and they miss it, it goes to the next level down. It's very leveled in each of those things that it's assessing. When they're done, that child is measured against themselves for their, from their last test and how much gain has made. These numbers look more at the grade levels and how they've moved together. But the beautiful thing about the NUEA, and as a teacher, for many years, we looked at standardized tests that were given across the country. This test tests that kid. And so when it's done, as a teacher, I could take that readout at the end and see, here's a gap, I got to get on this. I can have small groups that are low in this particular skill work together, and I can pump this up here with that group that needs it. It's really great for instructive purposes. And it is, it's the same test, the same question, so you're not comparing apples and oranges like we did with the MEA every single year. It's really instructive and you can see the actual growth the child made from the last test they took to this test, from spring to fall, fall to winter, winter to spring. It's a really fabulous tool for our teachers to use, and it tells you where that kid is, so you can instruct to it. It's it's a good test. I I'm just backing up what he said, but people that aren't, haven't used, that are unaware of it, I hope that answers, helps to answer some of the questions.
Thanks, Chris, for putting this all together. I was looking through more so in the individual grade reports and just kind of, you know, in my own mind, looking back at old scores and saying, okay, well, you know, the kids in this grade did so well a couple of years ago, what do they do now? You know, and and kind of what everyone's talking about here, but my my big concerns, and I know we've already put in a lot of RTI and and teacher engagement with the the children here at school, I don't think is so much the issue in in terms of engagement. My concern is, you know, us scaring all the parents away with COVID restrictions, not having them in school the same way that we always have. Where are we at with parent engagement? And now, I guess what I mean in my question here is not what we offer for parents to do, but what are we proactively doing for parents to help them understand where, for example, when you have a low or a low average consistently, what are we doing other than, you know, like we offer tomorrow, we got the counselors over there at LaFleur. So parents can come in, obviously, and speak to counselors and stuff at school, but where are we making the connection between parent, student, and their teacher that knows all that information?
I mean, that really is the the teacher is the is the first line in that defense and and reaching out to the parent or talking to the parent. And and we've tried to improve that communication, that is, that's one area that all schools tend to tend to struggle with is is that communication. And we put in place, because I'm going to forget the name of it, but now, but we have, we have those tools in place now where teachers can just message the parents, let them know what's going on and 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 try to get information out to them. But but still, even with that, it is still somewhat difficult to to get that connection because they're not, you know, they're not talking to them on a daily basis and and sometimes when parents hear the teachers reaching out, they always think it's going to be negative or or they take it that way, so. So it's still something that certainly, if there are, if there are great ideas out there, we'd certainly be open to them, but but it's it's just trying to have the teacher be able to reach out to the parent and talk to them and let them know what's going on and tell them what options are available and what things they can do.
Thanks, I, it's just, I think from my thing again, is even when you look at a lot of these individual grade reports, if you're just looking at the bottom two categories, if you just, you know, could say, all right, well, we know all of these families and the parents and everybody involved, if if we can come up with more of a plan of of some sort where they are, they are working more in unison, and I know, and I know we did some things when we were doing the online, because a lot of folks needed help with online training.
Yeah.
Is there something in here from like a digital perspective that we might be able to incorporate parents in with the school and the kids' technology piece or something that?
Yeah.
You know?
And there are some things out there, what people have found, like even the state put out like an online kind of a help, but we found it kind of lacking in a lot in, I I'm part of a group that meets every once a month, curriculum directors around the, around this region and around the state, and we talk and and there there has been movement in that front, even at the state level with the the things they've been putting out. But a lot of the districts are saying that it's not quite there yet, that it's still lacking. So I think there's movement in that direction, but it's certainly not not where we'd like to see it yet. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I'd like to piggyback off yours, if you don't mind. I honestly haven't had any problems with communication with teachers reaching out. We do have the online where you can check their grades, their attendance, teachers leave comments, if there's something missing, there's a big red circle saying this is missing. In addition to that, when my son comes home and his agenda, there's a piece of paper that each week is filled out with what his current grades are, if he's passing, failing, what he needs help with, any notes. And the teachers do a fantastic job with it. I'm I'm surprised to hear that there's been any difficulty with communication, but I do know that sometimes things get stuck in the bottom of a backpack. I I've seen many flyers in the bottom of my son's backpack. But that we do have the paperwork as well as the digital work, so maybe if we've sent out some type of announcements just to let people know where those things are, just as a quick reminder, because I know sometimes, sometimes, of course, there might be some kids who might be embarrassed if they're not doing well, and they may take that paper and put it in the very bottom of the backpack. So that might be something to announce. I I know that when I was growing up, we had a couple of kids on my bus that were like, can you put this in your backpack? I'd be like, no, because they just, they didn't want to get grounded, so stuff happens.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That might be something to think about.
Anyone else? Ready?
Yeah, I agree with you when it comes down to the pace of paper. I prefer paper over electronics. I hate the laptops, I hate the apps, I am, for some reason, a little old fashioned. It does sound like there is possibly a miscommunication where some parents might feel like they're kind of timid to approach certain situations. So maybe a refreshment with the, not just the parents, but the teachers and stuff, that there should be more communication. Everyone's welcome to talk, whether it be email, calls, texts, apps, Skype, Zoom, Meet, whatever these things are these days. But like everyone else, I love how you presented this, I love the front page and how you made example about stuff, because it it kind of was an eye opener. When the last full real year was what, three years ago?
Yeah.
And that is huge, like it kind of opened your eyes, like, wow. And I did notice that in these, you know, the way you did the color codes and stuff and the low, the average and stuff, I noticed that there is a huge increase in the low app, in the low thing, when it comes down to grades three through six.
Yeah.
And when you think about it, a couple of years ago in the beginning, that's when they were in the very peak of learning their basic things. And I'm wondering if there's an issue in these grades, the reason why they're scoring more low is because with the COVID restrictions and stuff, there's less hands on, there's less visuals and moving around and socializing, because kids are very social. Kids need routine, they need more styles of learning, not just standing in front of a computer screen or just doing packet after packet. So I'm wondering if that's what's causing a huge gap in the elementary is because of every other week, they're being quarantined or they're stuck just being on the laptop or doing the same papers. And I like, I love, personally, I love that there's no contact tracing right now. And I'm hoping personally that it might continue that way if there's no actual negative issues in a few weeks. Well, we'll see how that comes out. But if that being the case, we can start maybe getting these kids on a routine. And hopefully, with spring coming, more fresh air, maybe we can try to encourage more like out of, like outside classes and stuff, so kids can be more engaged. Maybe the next coming up year, maybe we'll see an increase in what it is this year, crossing fingers, you know what I mean? I think that we need to have these kids having more of a variety of getting back to normal, but still pleasing everything else, you know what I mean? So, yeah.
And that is where we see the gaps of those younger years, but that's also where we see the most hope, because the the younger they are, the the more they can grow quickly. You'll notice, and it's, and this is national, when kids are up in high school, they kind of get to their level, so they've used, the growth gets smaller and smaller. At the younger grades, you can make a lot more growth quickly, so.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Next up, Laura.
So good evening to everybody. I'm happy to report that we have onboarded a new staff member for the food service department. In this last month of January, she actually started tail end of December, so we're pretty happy with that. And we was able to start our fresh fruit and veggie program for our three buildings this month as well. We are, tend to be a little bit plagued with some equipment issues currently right now, equipment's running really hard, any of the outdoor units and freezers and, you know, refrigeration, it's kind of typical, I think. So we're just experiencing quite a few repairs and stuff right now. We did just receive our new double steamer for the primary school on the 17th. As when, and then we're still waiting for two double ovens for the primary and the elementary school. I just had the booster replaced at, in the dishwasher at the middle school on the 20th. And I think that's about it on equipment. We've had, you know, like I said, some cooler issues, just kind of general service issues, so those are all hopefully behind us at this point. I recently submitted for a supply chain assistance funding. And that funding should be received by the district in mid-March. So that's all good news, and the stipulations with that is that the funding has to be spent by the end of September on, in '23, food must be domestic products and it needs to be unprocessed or minimal processed food. So all of those are very easy to adhere to, so we're looking forward to that. Recently attended a DOE webinar on the 20th on what to expect from the USDA. And it should have been what you'd not, what you are not going to be told to expect from the USDA on school year '23 was more appropriately appropriately titled. Because at this point, all we do know is that meals will be free to all publicly enrolled students. Applications still will be required, but we don't know what the rates will be for '23, and we do not know if any waivers that have been applied for will come through. So we've got a lot of questions still, so it's making it a little challenging as we move on. We do have some options for the school year '23, and I'm just going to kind of briefly touch on those and we'll come back to them. My first option will be the community eligibility provision, which is something that, you know, we've spoken about before and I, you know, feel quite strongly about. And I think your previous administration felt strongly about it as well. I will be attending a webinar on February 15th on that. The second option is a special provisions two. And when it's the webinar on the 17th on on that one, and then the third option is to the traditional school year. So that is about it, unless anybody has any questions.
Questions or comments for Laura? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Robin.
Excuse me, hi, good evening. I just wanted to give you an update on the CNA workforce training program. We're doing certified nursing assistant as well as certified medical assisting. Um, we're doing certified nursing assistant as well as certified medical assisting training now. So we had a site visit and received state approval in November. Um, we've been recruiting for the program, and just this week, we interviewed fifteen candidates. Um, acceptance letters will go out tomorrow, and the program will start on February fifteenth. The class will be held Tuesdays and Thursday evenings for ten weeks. The program will also include BLS or B- basic life support certification and ninety clinical hours either at Franklin Memorial or one of the long-term, long-term care facilities that we've partnered with. Um, just last week, I was asked to join a statewide workforce team, uh, focused on presenting opportunities and ideas for strategic investment in rural forestry-driven communities. So the main development foundation, um, is co-leading this charge and has identified J Main as a community for investment. You mean, and you'll see this in the packet that I, um, gave to, uh, you may received a five hundred thousand dollar phase one award. Um, so they've identified partners and our workforce team is going to assist in writing the phase two grant. And I'm really hopeful that phase two will allow for implementation of proposed projects, and that our community will reap the benefits of that. And lastly, I've invited, uh, Kobe Perry from Western Maine Community Action. We spoke about this in the November school board meeting. Um, we're looking at partnering for childcare, so I just want to invite her up, so she can give a brief overview of the whole families program, which is brand new, and then talk a little bit about our collaboration with childcare through Adult Ed.
Hi, everyone. Um, it's good to see some familiar faces, and for those who I haven't met, I'm, I'm happy to be here. So I'm the Director of Family and Health Services at WMCA, and we have four programs that I manage. One is called the Whole Families Services, and, um, it's a poverty, it's a way to lift families out of poverty. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, and it uses a research-proven approach to coach families, have them set goals, and provide them with resources to move forward in their lives. And I'm actually hiring a whole family coach, so if you know of anyone who's interested, please send them my way. A second program is healthcare navigation. So if you are without healthcare, um, or need help navigating main care, or need help, um, navigating the healthcare marketplace, you can call us and we can help you with that. Um, let's see. And our third program, which is really big, um, a lot of people think that homelessness doesn't exist in our communities. I will guarantee you that it most certainly does, and Scott, I'm sure you have many families that are, um, without homes right now. And I know you do, because we have them in hotels. So if you know of anyone experiencing homelessness, send them our way. We don't just stack them in shelters or stack them in hotels. We provide wraparound services to make sure they get back on their feet. So it's a, it's pretty exciting. Um, Franklin County has been without homeless services for a long time, so we're happy to be a part of that. And of course, our last program that we have is childcare. Um, we're working with the hospital too, to open a childcare, and we'd love to open one at Adult Ed. How it works is that you provide the facility, we provide the staffing and the programming. So it, it's really a win for the school department, because it's not going to cost you much money. And our plan is to have about twenty slots, depending on ages and staffing. And for the school district to have fifteen of those slots, for Western Maine Community Action to have the other five. Um, and the fifteen for seventy-three will be some of Robin's students, and it will also be open to faculty and staff. Did I miss anything? All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Robin? Elaine?
I want to thank you for the survey you did with, with, uh, adults in the area about what difference childcare, having childcare services would make for their consideration in coming back to a higher learning program. Obviously, the need is huge from the numbers you gathered. And if we can do anything in that area, this sounds like the perfect pairing, and I want to thank you for the hard work you're doing. Making that, making us aware of how important that is for, for potential students and for them to better themselves and making it happen. Um, it's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and I'm very thankful to have partners who are on board and, and involved in this investment. Like you said, the numbers, I, I was very surprised for an eight-week survey to get, uh, sixty-seven respondents. To talk about their childcare needs. Um, you'll probably be sick of hearing about childcare. Um, if you didn't know, I'm actually going back to school. This is part of my dissertation for my PhD. So we'll continue to do more surveys and, um, dig into that. We'll be using this as a pilot program here, but I'll be doing this work nationally on how this, um, the relationship between child, onsite childcare and educational attainment levels. So thank you.
I thought of one more program that we have at Western Maine Community Action. I think it's really underutilized. It's not in my department, but I'd love to, just two minutes. It's called Emergency Rental Assistance, and there's two qualifications. You have to be moderate to low income, and you have to be affected during COVID, which we all have been affected during COVID, rising grocery costs, rising fuel costs, loss of work. So if you qualify and meet the income guidelines, you can get eighteen months of your rent paid for. And it's a really wonderful program that can help people get back on their feet. So if you know of anyone who's in that situation, if they're a renter, it's always worth a call to find out the income guideline. Or they can go to mainhousing.org, and the guidelines are right on there. Thank you.
Pat?
Sorry, for the Western Maine, um, I just had one question. Did you also have a heating assistance program? Since obviously it's cold right now, I, I thought maybe that would be something to highlight.
You bet, you bet. I don't run that program, but we do have heating assistance, both your traditional lie heat, which is for low-income people, and then we have emergency heating assistance, which we call it fifty-for-fifty. So for fifty dollars, you can get fifty gallons of fuel, and that's more of an emergency. Yes.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Thank you. Norma?
Hello, hello. My name's Norma Jatman. I'm the new Director of Transportation for Ashley Seventy-three. Um, public speaking's not mine, uh. I guess I'm going to have lots of practice at doing this. So, um, I introduced myself. I've been driving a little over twenty-nine years. Buses, city buses, school buses, trucks, all kinds of things. I started working for the district on Monday, January twenty-fourth, four short days of being the Director of Transportation. We had a new bus delivered yesterday to replace the, uh, bus number ten. That bus will be called bus number seven. Um, the bu- the cost of the bus was, uh, paid by insurance. We just had to pay out a thousand dollar deductible. Um, spoke to a few parents about their children, carefully learning more about the school budget. Uh, the drivers, custodians, bus monitors. I like to say we have a great, great team. Um, the last two days were really challenging with the weather. Uh, this morning, we had a couple freeze-ups, so I talked to Scott, so we could get out to the, the notice out to the parents quickly. A quicker way without bothering parents that weren't involved, and, um, so we're going to be posting like, uh, bus delays, uh, mechanical issues on the Facebook page. I think that's, at least the kids would see it, if not the parents. Um, I, I just think that's a better option for us than going down to the phone list and picking and choosing and hoping we catch people at home. Um, so I think that's going to really be beneficial to us to get the news out there, so we don't have upset parents, because their kids have been waiting outside. Um, I'm eager to learn how the school district is. I've worked for the school district before, um, but I never, like, really knew had like extreme knowledge about it. And, and just in the four days I've been here, I've actually learned a lot between talking to Scott, talking to Laura, Ken has been a help, and Sean, um, the administrative assistant has been a huge help to me. And I'm very excited for this opportunity. This is what I worked hard for. My whole driving career is to to progress in my career, and this has been a great, great opportunity. I look forward to learning and working with you guys, and that's about it, I guess.
Any question, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
Good evening. Um, first of all, just thanks, Scott, the school board for, uh, actually forgetting on this quickly and getting into transportation director. I think that's a great thing. Something we certainly needed, and I certainly want to thank Norma for accepting that challenge. Uh, I think it's a great one, but I think with the really working together, she'll do fine. Um, since our last meeting, uh, uh, nothing's really improved as far as our personalities go. Actually, it's probably gotten a little worse. Um, and I know I come up here and I have on this every time we meet, but uh, I don't, I don't know if everybody understands the struggles that we have to try to keep enough people here to, to do these functions. Um, it, it was good to hear the, hear the person speak at the beginning there about perhaps the COVID doesn't affect the students, and I, and I, and I really seen that maybe it doesn't too much here, but it certainly affects the older people here. Uh, this week, we had three people out. I mean, I was just thinking it was, oh, boy, we was getting a handle on on our custodial staff and going to get things, build, get rocking and rolling, and while three people go out with COVID, one, one's fairly severely, and, and two, right now is, it's kind of mild case, but it still really puts a damper to us, puts a damper to, to, um, the custodial staff especially. Uh, you know, you know, once again, I got to say, it's, it's only due to some, some very, very dedicated employees that we have here. You see two of them in this building, and you've probably seen walking by here. These guys work endless hours. I mean, they've, I, I don't even want to say how much they've been putting in. You know, and I, and I know we, uh, we, I, I, I'm just always afraid that we're going to burn people out. And I hope not, because these guys drive buses a day and they work, custodial work at night. So I, I, you know, I, I do, I do praise them for that, you know, I, and, you know, when Norma gets her feet, feet totally underground things, her, you know, her and I are going to have, I hope to sit down and and try to come up with some ways to even change some things that we do from within to, to alleviate some of these problems. Or, or even to go out and try to act, actively try to recruit some people. It just seems to, so hard to recruit people today. You know, we've, we've had a couple come through the, the S program, you know, but, uh, we just, it, it just seems impossible. Um, you know, I like to, I like to always give better news, but, you know, it's going to struggle to try to keep everything up and aboard with the, uh, with the maintenance path. Uh, we got a, 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 just a fabulous maintenance crew. I mean, I can't, I can't praise them enough. You know, they're driving buses, they come in and do maintenance things, uh, and they just go above and beyond. It's, it's really a for, it's a great thing. Um, I certainly look forward to better days. I, I, you know, when, one, one time, I hope we can get back to normal. Yeah, I hope we can perhaps by this summer, you know, it would be great. Um, in the moon, in the, you know, in the meantime, I just hope we don't lose some of our real valuable employees. You know, I'd like to just kind of end my spiel here, and, um, uh, you guys all know, I like to look at motivational speakers and, and, um, lately, I've been even actually coming on the weekends when I work and come and do, do power and, uh, check the buildings and things. You know, I started watching the, uh, the people who had, uh, the Medal of Honor recipients. I mean, I think it was just spectacular, and I try to always piece something that I read or see or hear that would fit my life and fit my employees' lives. And, and this, this weekend, I, I did watch a good person. I don't know if you, you probably have all even heard of this person. It's Sammy, Samuel Davis. He was a Vietnam veteran. Uh, he, he got the Medal of Honor. Um, I guess you probably really know him, if you probably, most of you have seen him, because if you watch Forrest Gump, he is the person that received the Medal of Honor with only Forrest Gump's face on his, his body as he received it. But I'm just going to end by saying, there was two things that he said when he gave the speech. If you ever have a chance to watch this, just look up Sammy, Samuel Davis Medal of Honor, and you'll see, you'll see his speeches. You just, you just saw this when he died, and what he took for being injured and everything else, and the people he saved by doing this. But he, he's the most honorable person I've seen. You know, he, he always kept saying, when I kept interviewing him, you know, I just did my job. I just did my job. And he ended by saying, you, you don't lose until you quit trying. Just a spectacular person, and I think we've got many, many employees like that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Ken? Thank you. The only thing I have for my report is I just want to welcome Norma and, uh, very, very glad and excited that, that you're on board. I've heard some really, really good things about you, so. Thank you. And COVID nineteen update. Don't have a lot to share tonight. There were no changes in the SOP this past two weeks, so we still will not be doing contact tracing. Uh, numbers, uh, four hundred and sixty-seven cases. Um, three hundred and ninety-eight were students and sixty-nine were adults. That's from the first day of school until today. Like I said, we're going to keep going. Um, the biggest thing is we worry about is if uh, some local schools around us have had to go remote for a week here or there, and it's because, it isn't because of the number of student counts, it's, it's the staff count. Uh, so they're not able to run the building safely or able to transport the children safely, so um, we're keeping our fingers crossed, and our goal is to be in school every day. And, uh, hopefully, we can continue to do that, so.
Something, the numbers, are they get, is this thing on correct? The numbers may getting, from the beginning of the year, you said four hundred and something, four hundred and
Sixty-seven cases, yeah.
Is that like through cool testing? Is that like at the?
That's all positive cases.
So anyone that calls in and says my child was a positive through a PCR engine or okay, because I wasn't too sure if that was pool testing, if that was with the Thursday testing, or if it was like anytime or whenever they got up.
Yep, there's any positive test that's been reported to us, that we then turn around and report to the state.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else? Thank you, Scott. Hey, you got your appointments, hires, and as Laura put down there, yay, no retirements or resignations. Thank you. Just a reminder, members, please, uh, see Laura, uh, immediately following the meeting to get your fiscal year twenty-three budget books, and, uh, good reading for tonight. Just a reminder, once you start looking through the books, feel free to give me a call or an email. Uh, we, we don't have the revenues in there yet. Uh, we did get the two seventy-nine early this year. Um, was good news with the two seventy-nine, so I don't want you to panic when you just see the budget, because you don't have what, that other piece is, but you'll have that at the next meeting. We'll go over that piece, so. You'll, you'll have the revenue picture. Hey, we have Eric. Remember, uh, February is going to be a busy month for us. It's budget season. So February third, we have our, uh, board meeting at the primary school, February tenth. At the elementary school, February seventeenth, at the middle school. And don't forget finance on the seventeenth. And we have school vacation weeks, so we actually get a break on that one. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Doug, second, Lena. Go call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.